I have, I have. I call to order the May 28th Planning and zoning Commissioner. They have a roll call, please.
Amanda here.
Jeff here.
Lynn here.
Eric here.
Michael here.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the highest law that governs us as for all.
First thing, approval of regular agenda. Has everybody read it?
Yes.
Are there any corrections or changes? They have a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda of May 28th, 2025.
Second?
Second.
Which one do you first?
Eric.
How about motion by Amanda, second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of May 14th. Does anybody have any corrections, changes, anything? No, 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 no. May I have a motion, please?
I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 22nd.
May 14th.
May 14th, sorry.
May I have a second?
I second.
Motion by Eric, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Declaration of conflicts of interest, anybody?
I will be recusing for the June 22nd. Answer.
I want to go on record, as I did last meeting, that I live at 414 Eagle Street, which is adjacent to the Myers Barn's current resident, our current place of where it sits at 25 Harrison.
Thank you. Public comment?
I'm not refusing myself, I'm just making a record.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on something not on tonight's agenda? Are you hiding that there?
I didn't intend to, but I'm just sitting here.
Well, you can move over here where you can see us better.
I've got to go let Nathan in my car and I'll do that then.
Um, no one online, so we'll close public comment. No special presentations? Design review and land use public hearings? We're going to start with 0206 Miles and Lane. Uh, there is nobody here and there are changes, so would you like to?
Yes. So this is a request for changes to approve plans. Uh, the only thing materially changing is the height. Uh, it is now proposed to be 26 feet 11 and 5 eighths inches, when it was originally 27 feet 9 and 1 eighths inches. Um, so staff is recommending approval.
Anybody on the commission have anything?
I do have a question, but it's more for staff. Um, because I thought we had talked through like some of these like that are like where they go below or minor that they didn't need to come back in front of the store. Is that just with the new code that we've been working on?
I think that's just built in place.
Uh, no, it's not specific to built in place. Um, so when we, when Minter North initially came around for their first round, um, we certainly requested that minor things like windows changing, uh, certain material changes, like actual like rock, stone, things like that, material changes, um, that that be staff approved. Uh, but given the change in building height or any change in building footprint, staff, um, was not comfortable approving that ourselves. So that's why, uh, things like that get brought back to me.
Okay, so it's just not, even though it go, it went smaller, it's still?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, staff.
Okay. Nobody else on commission? Will open to public comment? Anybody?
Check online. No one online.
Close public comment. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve final plans for 0206 Miles and Lane.
Second?
I second.
Motion by Michael, second by Amanda. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Amanda, aye.
Definitely.
Lynn, aye.
Eric, aye.
Michael, aye.
Next. 0125 Miles in Lane, new single family residence, Madison.
So this is a five bedroom, 5,990 square foot, single family home, which I think this is the largest that y'all have, y'all have reviewed from Minter North. Um, it's measured to the midpoint of the roof at 27 feet 10 and 3 eighths inches. Uh, parking is adequate with four off-street spaces, two in the garage, two in front. All setbacks are respected, uh, and the proposal is under the allowable lot and impervious coverage limitations. Uh, they have more snow storage than is required by the code at 488 square feet. Staff has identified no issues and recommends approval of plans.
You guys have a commission have any questions? Open to public comment?
Check. There is yes.
No public comment, no close public comment. May I have a motion, please?
I have a motion to, uh, 0125 Mi- uh, the final.
Miles and?
Mi- 0125 Miles and Lane. The final plan.
May I have a second?
I second.
Motion by Eric, second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
I should do roll call, so.
Sorry.
We're going to do a quick roll call vote, please.
Amanda, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Eric, aye.
Michael, aye.
Thank you. 491 Main Street, new single family residence, conditions update.
So at the April 28th, uh, meeting, the planning commission approved the plans for 491 Main Street, uh, subject to the conditions that discrepancies in regards to the lot size and therefore the, uh, impacted a lot and impervious coverage, uh, and snow storage amounts, uh, be, uh, addressed, updated, et cetera, um, that they submit new plan for parking consolidating all of it onto the property, um, as well as ensure that the clear vision on the corners is respected. So, and, and obviously that they come back at this meeting. Uh, the discrepancy is mentioned in regards to the lot. Uh, the surveyor has con- has confirmed, uh, that the lot is 4,801 square feet. Um, and all calculations were based off this number. All of the percentages and square footages of lot and previous and snow storage, uh, are all under the allowed amount. Uh, but you'll see before you an exhibit that staff put together, uh, showing the clear vision site triangles on each corner of the lot at Main Street and Meek and then Meek and Boulder, uh, showing that it does comply with the 15-foot site triangle. Uh, I would like to make a, a point of note that on the Main Street Meek corner, uh, because of the little rectangle that CDOT, um, acquired in 2018 as part of the sidewalk project, uh, there are two different site triangles, one based on the original geometry of the lot, um, which is obviously what people see when they're turning, and then one based on the actual, uh, point at the front of the lot that is now their new lot line. Both of them comply, um, not worried about it. I just wanted to show what it would have been originally, um, when the lot was, uh, when the lot used to be this size that it was. Uh, so based on all of that, staff believes that all the conditions have been addressed. Um, all of their parking is on site, um, as you can see on those plans. Um, and so we're a little unsure of how to handle this. I guess I'm recommending approval, but y'all already technically approved it. You're just seeing that the conditions have been addressed. Um, but yes, that staff is, for all intents and purposes, recommending approval.
Somebody like to try to form a? Go on this?
Public comment?
Oh, public comment first, sorry.
And we do have the architect and the owner online if you have any questions.
Good evening, thank you for coming.
Certainly. My, my apologies for not being there in person. I think I told you all I could and then I got pulled out of town for work, but it's.
You're here in person, so we're here here. So therefore, does anybody in commission have any questions of the owner? No, 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 no.
I do.
Jeff does?
I'm just, as a point, the, the, the car that locks the garage. I don't know that I've seen parking shown this way. I'm just concerned that it seems a little, little bit like pushing the envelope, but I don't have a problem. I mean, I know it can work. It's just, it looks a little bit tricky to, obviously if the person in the garage wants to get out, I don't know how easy that's going to be. I don't know how big these cars scale, but it just, I've never really seen a car perpendicular parking to block the car in the garage. I've seen stacked, you know, where you can back out. But the way this is, it just looks a little like a log jam, but I'm just pointing that out as a point of reference.
I'd like to respond to Jeff on that a little bit, because I know this meeting, um, you were running a little behind on this meeting. And the reason that they changed it is because originally some of it was encroaching into the street and some of it was encroaching into the snow storage and the, this is definitely different, like you said.
Not the snow storage, just the street.
Just the clear vision.
Nope, just the street.
Right.
And since we are attempting to get people to put their parking on the property, they will, and Eric will, since that's what they've come back.
Uh, like I said, if it works, it works, you know, obviously if it doesn't, then we'll see that it doesn't down the road. But it just looks a little suspect to me, but I'm, I'm all for trying.
I have a staff question based on Jeff's comment. So, you know, this was at the request of staff or at us to try to get the parking all on the lot. If down the road, this isn't something that's really manageable, can they come back and request that encroachment agreement for parking?
They can always apply. That's a provision in the code and application that's allowed for them to ask the town council for, so yes.
Okay, so they can come back.
And Jeff, if I can just address your, your comments, um, our code, I'm looking at our parking design requirements and there's nothing specific that says they can't do that.
Right.
Um, to your point, it's not something we see normally. Um, in Red Cliff, it certainly happens a lot. But, uh, just, just to address that from a code perspective, there's nothing expressed that says it has to be a certain way. It does talk about how ingress and egress, um, to a minor or major arterial, which this street is not an arterial, um, needs to be considered. So I, I think from a code standpoint, we're okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know that it, it physically can work. So I just think it's, it's probably not what the owner wanted in the first place anyway, so I think this is the solution. So I'm just pointing out that it'll be the neighbors that may or may not enforce it because the town enforcing it will probably be a little more challenging, so. But I'm, I'm, you know, it works, so it's fun to point it out.
Mr. Pfeiffer, I would like to thank you for doing that.
Certainly. Certainly.
You made it work and we greatly appreciate it. Does there anybody else have anything?
Um, the only question I have is it does still show in the drawing that you have that he is going to still pave his driveway all the way up to the road? Is that still accurate?
That is accurate. Um, so you'll notice, uh, any driveway on, on Main Street that connects to Main Street and, I mean, any driveway that connects to any street is likely not entirely on their own property. They have to get, they have to get to the street somehow. Um, so yes, he is still going to pave that.
Okay, and the only reason why, because it was a larger swath of land than most others, being at like 7B plus. Yeah, okay, cool, thank you. I appreciate you still willing to pave to the street too.
Sure. I'd like to say one thing as well, you know, I'd like, neither was ideal, uh, Mr. Pfeiffer, and I appreciate you coming up with a plan to try to comply with code and, and, and make it work and obviously, you know, it's a little bit of an inconvenience to let somebody out in the garage and, um, and thank you for just trying to figure out a way to make it work. I appreciate it. Certainly, certainly.
Okay. I make a motion to, right, or no? Do we have to make a motion or no motions?
Yeah.
No motion.
Since we're responding to the condition that we made at the last one and everybody is in approval, we do not need a motion.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you all. Thank you, thank you.
Your lilacs blooming.
It's gorgeous.
Yes, it is. All right, thanks everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Design review, 801 Cemetery Road, Myers Barn relocation to Little Beach Park.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I might just, uh, say a few words and then I believe Ken Halliday is online and he can walk you through all the work that he and Woody and Kelly and lots of other people have been doing, uh, surrounding this proposal. Um, at the last meeting, you might recall that we tabled this, um, review, um, for good reason. Uh, and I, and I want to thank Katie Sickles. She had provided some input, um, kind of at the last minute, but I think it was very, uh, important that we kind of pause and think about some of the questions that she raised. Um, and her involvement really had to do with other things that she's doing for the town in and around Little Beach Park and how all these pieces fit together. Um, and so I think that gave us all, uh, a chance to talk about some logical next steps and how this project might move forward. Uh, I also thought it was important to bring this back to, uh, Planning Commission and let Ken, uh, get through this step of the process, uh, so we can, you know, continue to work with Ken. And I think that's the bottom line. This has been very collaborative, uh, from the start. Ken's been working on this for, uh, over two years and Woody and Kelly Toon and Madison and HPC and Michelle and everyone that's touched this. Uh, I think all agree that, um, finding a new home for the Myers Barn and we have a willing, uh, landowner who's been working with Ken, uh, is the most important thing. Uh, some other important things to the town as it's moving to a town property that has already gone through a process of, you know, having the Little Beach, uh, Sub area master plan. We spent quite a bit of time and resources working with Zarin and Associates to come up with a good kind of conceptual plan for that property and how things might, uh, build out. Um, we need to respect that part of the process too and make sure that as Ken and his team and his volunteers are looking at deconstructing this building and moving it and having maybe doing that in a short time period, uh, making sure that it arrives in the right place and that we've kind of site planned around that. Uh, so, um, as you'll hear from Ken, um, we and Katie certainly engaged Pedro Campos from Zarin Associates, who did the original master plan, uh, to see if Pedro could kind of step in and help us develop a site plan for, uh, this building and what goes on around it. Um, that's kind of a missing component that we, we need to understand. Uh, and Ken, I won't speak for you, but I think based on our conversations, there's a willingness and we're all kind of on the same page of yes, let's do that first. Uh, and there might be a point in the future this summer or early this fall where some of those pieces come together uh, and the barn can be deconstructed and moved, but, um, I don't, I'll stop there. Ken, you, you can jump in. Um, but I just want to let you know that, uh, I think, you know, we, we tabled this because we had some input. We've now had a chance to react to that. I think we're all on the same page and I see a path forward for this project, so. Anything to add to that? Okay. Ken, take it away.
Hi Ken.
Sure. Hello, everyone. Uh, good to be with everyone.
Name and address, please.
Oh, Ken Halliday, 811 Main. So Kelly, Woody and I have been working on this thing for a couple of years, as mentioned. Uh, we're doing it in our capacity as volunteers, just care about the community, want to see something good happen with the Myers Barn. Um, there's a lot of pieces to it, but fundamentally, I think it's important to state upfront that this is a town project. We're just volunteers facilitating, making it happen and raising some money to make it happen. But fundamentally, it's a town project. It's going to be on town property. It's going to be eventually owned by the town once it gets over there. So I think the town does need, and Katie, I think did a good job of pointing this out, needs to look at this as a town project and we're just volunteer partners working with the town. The context piece that I wrote was really not a rebuttal at all, but more of just to let you guys know, we've been working on this for a while and this is how we got here. It's kind of the story of how we got here on some of these key issues that were raised. Um, and, um, having said that, um, the reason I did that was so we wouldn't get a lot of questions about how we got here. And instead, what I want to say is moving forward, and Scott said it very well, our attitude is we're here to help with the town. And the town can tell us what their requirements are. If those requirements change, that's great. Uh, frankly, I told Katie when she called me about this, uh, some weeks ago, that w- we would really appreciate having Pedro and Zarin Associates help us cite the barn. Because can you imagine going out there, looking at a paper master plan and that's trying to decide, how should it sit? How far from the edge, you know, and, uh, when we were told that we wouldn't have access to them, it was very concerning for us. Um, so we welcome, um, a lot of the things that were raised by Katie and I think that there's a, um, a continuing commitment from our standpoint to do this right and do it according to town requirements. And I think the town is, is doing everything it can to sort of figure what that app, figure out what that is. And so is there anything else that I should address?
No, I, not on, um, no, I, I think, Ken, you, you addressed everything that we need to address, uh, from your perspective. You know, one of the things that we're, um, I wouldn't say grappling with, but we're now, uh, because we're talking more amongst each other, um, Pedro's going to get involved, Jeff Spinell, I think at some point will be involved, um, just kind of the timing of things. So if there's a, uh, an effort to physically remove, deconstruct the barn, uh, catalog or number the actual logs so they can be put back together in their exact, uh, pieces. Ken, your friend Jim is, is going to be helping with that and he's available at different points throughout the summer. So, you know, if, if at one point we were concerned that this needs to happen quickly and it needs to go and, um, I think there's been a, enough conversations that we now know that, um, there's some flexibility in the timing of that. Uh, there's not a ton of pressure from the landowner to that it has to happen next week or.
Right.
So that gives us time to work with, um, Zarin and Associates, whatever we need to do as a town to help support this from a site planning standpoint. If we need a new soils, uh, report, we can do that. If we need a site plan, a new survey, those things can happen, um, even, even after the, the barn is deconstructed. I don't, I know the preference is not to deconstruct the barn, move it to a storage place. I think the town would offer up perhaps, uh, a spot in our leased lot, uh, where it could be stored on a trailer, um, for a short period of time. That's not preferred. Uh, it's probably better to move it all at once to the site. Um, so we're, we're still working through those things, but I guess the point is I think we've got some breathing room to do that. And I think everyone's in agreement that we need to take the time to do it correctly.
Yeah, just for the planning, just for the commission there, just if I could take just a few minutes to explain how this is going to happen. So you're understanding what Scott's saying. First thing we do is we go in according to environmental requirements and with, and we clean the barn out because there's potential antivirus. So we get it cleaned out. The second step is we take the roof off and we save all the original roof materials. The roof has a bow in it. We plan to fix that with a, uh, a, uh, piece of steel up at the top that's engineered into the plan that y'all have seen. The next step, which my friend Jim Parker has done this eight times with eight different structures, mainly cabins and small barns, is you actually take the logs off, starting at the top and you number them, uh, log one north side, log one east side. And, and you put those onto a very large trailer. These are 27 feet long, the ones along the side. Put those onto a very large trailer and they're all catalogued. So you, once you get that done, then it's got to be moved over to the site and you ideally don't do this until you got your foundation poured, which means you've got your building sighted and you've done all your work there. And then you bring it over and then you offload it so that if you follow me, the logs from the top of the structure are on the bottom and the bottom of the structure on the top of the trailer. So when you offload, you're putting the logs right back in that same order. So it's a very, very sort of, uh, uh, very specific way you do it. And then you rebuild the roof, uh, primarily using the, the strength of the steel. Um, and, and when we take it apart, we know there's some logs that we've already identified that have to get replaced and we found a, a source for those logs. They're about the same age, they're close to the same length, they're available. So we've got, and we've got the people lined up to do it. Most everyone is from Minterne except my friend from Texas. Uh, and so it's pretty much an all volunteer team and we've already raised the money. So really, we're ready to go. But we also are patient, want to do this right and want to do it in, within the, uh, requirements of the town. And the landowner's been, um, flexible so far with that, so we appreciate that very much. I don't know if there's any questions, but I thought that little explanation might help.
Thank you, Ken.
Amanda? So I have questions. I'm not sure it's really for Ken and, and his team or more bits for the town of Minterne because it'll be on the town property. So between, now, I'm very familiar, obviously, with the structure. And I know what goes on there at night and, um.
What, what does go on there? It's the haunted area.
It's the raccoon red light district. So, so my question, like between phase one and phase two, just because it is going to be, you know, relocated to a pretty more populous like place, is are you guys going to be doing any sort of protection around it to either keep the vermin out or keep, you know, just teens, like just everything, you know, so that it's safe between when we, phase one, where it's just really what it is today to what we're envisioning, which is a more functional building with concessions, things like that. That would be my one question, I think, for you guys is like from a security perspective. It, I mean, we do have strangers come up all the time to it before this project, after the project, trying to get into it, things like that. So that would be one question for you guys. And then, um, my other question is, um, also around kind of it tails in like the access, you know, that whole front porch is pretty, you know, you've seen it. You know, are you guys planning on moving the front porch too or just that main structure? Um, because that front porch seems like it would be something that may not be salvageable.
So there's a structure on the side and there's a porch and, and, and both of them, we're going to take off. And, uh, our commitment and all, our approval from HPC is just to move it and reassemble it as is. Then phase two, they'll be planning around what it's going to ultimately look like. There might be a shed roof added, et cetera. You know, so it can really be used. There might be some windows cut, all with HPC and other approvals that are required. Um, so that's really, you know, the, the, the plan that we have is to, um, is to move it over and just in phase one and get it there. Uh, phase two, we get the design plan done, then we raise additional money for that and we're committed to following it through phase two. Uh, nobody's really raised this issue of the, whether the raccoons might find their way over there. You know, we're hoping they're going to set up, no, we're, we're not going to send them to your house, but we'll, they're going to hopefully scatter to some new locations. Um, but yeah, when it gets put together, one of the reasons we didn't move it as a whole and we did look at that, that's very expensive, but also we didn't have a chance to really fix the integrity of the building. And by moving it log by log, replacing logs and fixing it, we'll be able to make it a much better, tighter structure. And so that's going to help a lot. I don't know the, how the town, what their requirements will be, but whatever they are, we'll work with the town to make sure it's secured in between phase one and phase two, because it could be, it, it might sit there for a little while while the planning's going on for phase two. So I think that's an excellent point.
Um, and then the only other question is on the roof, because that roof site does cause a lot of slides. So that's the only other thing, like, I mean, we all know not to be around it when it's about to slide. What is the, the roof on this thing?
We might need to put some, we might, uh, that Michael might be able to help us with that, but we might need to put some stops like you put on metal roofs so it doesn't slide. We do want to reuse the roof because it's kind of iconically part of it. And frankly, the roof saved the whole structure. Otherwise, it would probably be really, really dilapidated even more than it is.
Yeah, no, it's just going in a much more populous area.
Yeah.
You know, people are going to be more interested. I'll probably still have my family pictures out next to it like we do today, but it's.
Yeah.
It's cool.
Yeah. But you know what I'm talking about, the little, what, Michael, the clips or something? I know we're putting that on our new roof.
Oh, yeah. I put that roof on.
Oh, no.
Just so you know, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, you did that roof, didn't you?
A long time ago.
But I'm sure we can, uh, that's, that's something that nobody has raised yet, so I appreciate you raising that and we can certainly address it in the, in the, when we do.
Snowplugs are easy to add on that, snow retention, especially if you had a steel beam so it can take the additional weight.
Yeah.
That's an easy, easy thing.
Yeah.
Those are my only questions and it's more just from a planning perspective.
I really appreciate that, um, because just having those easier to look, put an RFP together or what that site plan may entail. Security would be, um, one thing. The raccoons and pest control would probably be a, a different item to, to consider management and maintenance later on.
Yeah, well, and I mean, I know there's pests out and vermin out there now. It's just that this has been more of an open situation and obviously, you know, since our current, like neighbor purchased the property, the vermin are much more or less than what they were under the previous owner. Um, Lauren's done a great job of keeping it, the property much cleaner and especially this, this building, because it used to be filled with trash. But it's, you know, it's, uh, it's still a problem and it's just more of a security, like when it's going into a lot more populous area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, man, I'm really excited about it. I love that burn.
Did a job for me.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, uh, thanks for taking on the project and raising the money and then to keep this historical building part of the town. It's really cool.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, one to start with, I'd like to thank you and everybody that's worked really hard on this because it's a, it's, you know, a first step for something in Minterne. I definitely like your explanation idea as far as taking, taking down, labeling it, foundation being in first makes absolute sense because, you know, we've seen stuff go down to the yard and not move for eight years.
It's a concern of ours, yes.
The only, uh, two things that if you haven't done that I suggest is, you know, obviously you're going to want to do a utility locate before you, you pour your foundation for that. Because back in the, back in the late nineties, at one point there was down past there, there was talks of an RV park. And I think, you know, I don't think you need a, I don't think you need a new plat map if everybody can agree to where it's going to go. But I would do a utility locate. And if the railroad tracks, say a hundred feet, I'd go a hundred and twenty just to be safe, because I think we spent money in the nineties and found out we spent money running gas utilities. So probably it wasn't ours. But I don't think that, I, hopefully you can work out the location without, without redrawing everything and, and, um, because I think you definitely want to pour your foundation, the, the utility locates are important. But hopefully you can all agree on something amongst yourselves and start digging for your foundation and do it the way that you have planned, because that's the way it needs to be done.
Yeah, we, we do need help from the town though, telling us, you know, where the, you know, all of that and they're going to.
Oh, they're very helpful.
Yeah. You don't have money in the budget for that.
I'm sure you can hopefully work that out.
I'd like to have a groundbreaking ceremony.
Yeah. Well, can you imagine with this, the logs are being moved and put up and all that? We, we also
First shovel on the ground to dig for the foundation.
Yeah, we'll have you there Lynn, for sure. And they also
I'll bring the shovel.
Don't take her down.
The other beauty of slowing things down and, you know, sometimes you can only see things when you get a little perspective and then it's in hindsight. But by slowing it down, it also gets us out of the concert series. And we started thinking about that Madison and I the other day. How are we going to deal with construction, you know, and so slowing it down to either the end of summer, early fall or, you know, even potentially next year. Um, we hope it's not next year, but if it needs to be, it will be. The town will tell us.
The barn can stay in site though technically, right?
Huh?
There it is until we decide it's ready to go. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, the owner, the owner always had the expectation, you know, signing up for all of this and so being super supportive, just so you all know, um, uh, that it would be moved. Now, the timing has always been up in the air. We're not getting a whole bunch of pressure, but the expectation is that it's going to be moved. And that's kind of our commitment not to leave them hanging on this. Um, personally, I'd like to see it moved. Um, and I'd like to honor that commitment to them.
I, I believe that we've got a little time to work with and resources, um, to get a updated survey. Uh, if we need any soils investigations, we can do that. And also the plans, the site plan by a professional to be able to keep this moving on a reasonable schedule.
Yeah, if you pour concrete by before winter, you can do anything.
That's right.
Yep.
Get covered with snow back there. We get it late. It's usually late November that that street gets frozen.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with what Scott just said. I think we've got time.
Is Ken the, the top dog, like he's the charge? He's the project manager?
I don't know, Ken. Are you? I mean, I, Woody's going to be the contractor.
I'm, I'm, I'm Carrie. I'm the Carrie dog. No, I'm a, I'm one of three. And, uh, so the way we've kind of split this up is, uh, Kelly on, uh, Kelly, uh, what is Kelly on? Design? Woody's on building, uh, I'm on whatever else is left, uh, chief cook, bottle washer, whatever. And, uh, Jim Parker's going to be the real key to this thing because he's done it. And, uh, Jim, it's going to be really important. Uh, he's been here out two summers. He's been here both summers, uh, looking at that barn and helping us think about it. So he's very familiar with it and believes it'll work. And so that's the most important thing.
I'm only asking that question, Scott, because when it comes to pouring that slab and who's going to draw that slab, whatever plumbing goes into that slab or is, you know, drains and if there's maybe a toilet someday or, you know, like thinking out of the box a little bit of the different uses of that building down the road. Once it's in concrete, it's in concrete. So I think we should think about pipes cheap.
Yeah, one, one thing that you, that I would like to mention is in phase one, we're just going to put the perimeter concrete. It won't be anything on the floors and we're going to, we're going to leave pass, our thought is, at least in the plan that was presented, I hope it's in the packet somewhere. You should see an engineer drawing from, um, uh, Albert Ewing. And, uh, it does, we do contemplate putting, you know, even though there's no water, you know, we'll have a place for water to come in. And then in phase two, all that gets worked out, including landscaping and interior, et cetera. I think bathrooms, uh, are always thought about, have always been discussed as a separate item. And I think Katie, I think that was your opinion too, looking at it. But, uh, all, all that's going to be up to the, uh, you know, the master plan, a site plan that gets eventually done. But I think those are important issues to consider as well.
It's easy on your walls. As Jeff said, you can throw a couple pieces, eight inch pipe and you can fit anything through it later.
Yeah, that's the plan. Yeah, that way it's totally flexible.
Better job. It's coming holes out fine.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything? We're not. Is this motion to continue?
No.
No? This discussion or? Motion for approval?
It's an actual file and you need to take action on it, please.
Who would like to do that?
Uh, before, can I have public comment?
Oh, public comment, yes. Anybody in the audience, please?
I have a public comment to read into the record. That was included in your packet.
Is anybody on Zoom also?
Nobody on Zoom.
Okay.
Uh, so from David McMillan, uh, he states that I live almost directly across the river from Little Beach Park to eight twenty-two Main Street. And I'm in complete agreement and you have my full support of proposed relocation of Myers-Barnton Park. Thank you.
I think everybody's actually looking forward to it that I know of. They think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
It can have a million ideas as to what's going to go inside of. That'll be interesting. Okay, with that.
Make the motion to approve the Myers barn as presented.
Conditions, please.
The conditions as listed.
Thank you.
May I have a second?
My second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Amanda. Your own call.
Amanda, aye.
Yeah, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Yeah, aye.
Michael, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
We're going to expect you guys all to join the volunteer team.
Okay.
We'll be there.
I'm on.
Already got a shovel for Lynn. See you guys. Bye-bye.
I can bring my own. I was a landscaper.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
We can relocate those raccoons, that bigger one.
Yeah, okay. All right, there we go. See you. Bye-bye.
I have a half a heart. Cage.
A lot of lions out there. Might like them.
I'll use the kitchen with trash cans.
Next on tonight's agenda, two twenty-two Main Street addition to a single family residence. Bye, Jeff.
Thank you.
Jeff is accusing himself. Madison?
Yes.
But I am staying present.
Aye.
Go ahead and answer questions as the contractor.
Uh, so this is a new three bedroom, about fourteen hundred square foot addition to the single family residence at two twenty-two Main Street within the Old Town Mix Houston District. Uh, the plans show a two-story, three-bedroom addition with a maximum building height of twenty-six feet, six inches. Measured to the midpoint, which is under the maximum level twenty-eight feet. Uh, parking is adequate with four off-street spaces in the driveway. Uh, as a point of note, there is a typo in the staff report which states the plan shows the first floor with two existing bedrooms, four bedrooms and primary living area. Uh, that should read the plan show the first floor with two existing bedrooms and primary living area. I apologize. I don't recreate these staff reports every time. I just go through and change out the relevant information and that obviously didn't get deleted from the last version of the staff report. So total, there are five bedrooms, not nine, as this adds up to. Hopefully nobody saw that break down. How'd you fit so many bedrooms in there? Um, so, uh, the planning commission should note that the staff, that staff did not include the paper walkways and patio in the calculation for impervious area, as we have not included those in prior applications, uh, throughout town. Um, so the table on sheet site plan, uh, within the plan set doesn't entirely match up with staff's calculations. Um, since that recently came up with another agenda item that was actually on tonight's agenda. I wanted to be completely transparent in how staff arrived at the impervious, uh, calculations, um, that we did. So, uh, staff is recommending approval. Uh, if you noticed, uh, Scott and I were kind of whispering over here. Uh, I did want to kind of address a couple of things that weren't in the staff report, um, but that Scott hopefully brought up. Uh, if you'll notice, the addition is built over, or well, the house is built over two lots. Um, the addition is going on top of that. Staff didn't flag that as we have in the past because the house is already existing. It's already built there. Um, but we do understand if, if that is something that you would like to make a condition of approval. Um, the minor subdivision amended final plat eliminating that interior lot line as has been done in the past. Um, and then, uh, at the north end of the property, oh, uh, that staff say, states that the existing structure encroaches into the setback, but that portion of the structure isn't being touched. The addition is within all setback requirements. And so the encroachment is a pre-existing non-conformity. I do want to make clear, there is a note on the survey, uh, but that, uh, Jen and Joe own the, or they have a quick claim deed to that little sliver of land that's kind of triangular shaped, uh, that runs along the north end of that property. Uh, which if that was combined, that would make it not a non-conformity, because at that point it would be five feet away from that, that property line. Um, so if they do combine all of those, it's, it's five feet. Regardless, it's a pre-existing non-conformity. Staff isn't worried about it. The addition is entirely within the setbacks. But I did kind of want to bring that to everybody's attention, um, given the note that was in the staff report. So all that said, uh, staff does understand if you'll have additional conditions that y'all want to, uh, impose due to the stuff that I just said, uh, but staff is recommending approval.
Jeff, do you have a presentation?
No. Just here to answer questions.
Does anybody on the commission have questions?
Could you just show what you just went through with the lot lines now if you can on the screen? Just because I'm trying, or just somebody, which part that I missed?
Let me pull that up real quick.
I'm still thinking about raccoons.
I know, I'm like, this sliver is what's getting
The red light is.
I can probably point it out. If you put it on the screen, I can probably
Yes.
Jeff, can you just make sure you bring the mic with you?
You know how I like to walk around with wireless mics?
I do.
Okay, Jeff Armstead, sixteen thirty-two Main Street. So these are the two lots, you know, traditional old, um, Minterne twenty-five feet, twenty-five foot by a hundred and something lot. And when Jen and Joe bought this from the church, this was like the Presbyterian Church of Denver or something, on the same one time. There was a little sliver, which is, you can see this lot line of lot three that runs straight here. And then there's this kind of angled line here where Darren Tohoki's fence wall is. And then it kind of angles back down again. Well, that little, this little area here never made it into their possession when they first bought the property. So they had to do a quick claim deed with the church
Okay.
to acquire that little piece, which brought their property line back over to where Darren's property line is on lot two. So, you know, kind of, if you, if you go out there and you look from the street, from Main Street, you know, Darren's got this concrete wall that sort of makes this L. And then there's a wooden fence that pretty much follows Darren's property line back, but it, it doesn't follow it exactly. But either way, that little sliver that we're talking about was, is what's listed on the survey. And to Madison and Scott's, um, recommendation, we are going through the process of doing a quiet title to sort of incorporate everything into one lot. You know, so that there's just four corners, so to speak, instead of all this mumbo jumbo with quick claim deeds and multiple lots and everything, just to sort of clean it up moving forward. It's not a, it's not a requirement that we have to do it right now, but it is something that moving forward, it would be smart to do on their recommendation. So we have been working with, um, the church again to make sure that everything is, um, make sure that when, when it goes in front of the judge, to do the quiet title, it'll just happen. So, um, but that being said, to what Madison explained was if you take the five-foot setback from there to the existing one, not including the quiet title, it doesn't meet the setbacks, but it does meet once you take into consideration what they have in their quick claim deed, so. That answer your question?
Just to clarify that the existing house doesn't meet the setback.
Correct.
But the proposed addition would be seven, five feet from the existing property line, irregardless of the quiet titling.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, what, what's going, what's being proposed to be added onto the second story is within the setback, even though the lower portion of the house encroaches. And that was obviously to, um, to not, or to meet the code and to not, um, exacerbate a, a, a non-conformity.
Got it. Okay. And one other question, because we just had this come through with some of our others. So like on, at Eagle County, at Eagle County with the G, G I S, does it show that sliver as just a separate sliver?
I don't believe so. Let me check.
No, it's just a square on the G I S. But the G I S is not
I know. We all know. Okay.
If you dig and if you go into the G I S and then you click and you get to the surveyor part and you follow the chain of the, the web links, then it will pull up the quick claim deed has its own link. But, and it's referenced on the G I S, but it, the actual G I S map is just going to show you a square.
I think that was where Hal Holbrook lived.
In Jen and Joe's house?
Present, the Presbyterian church was home to him. And I think that was where the minister lived.
Yes.
Anybody else?
I just had a question on the side setback in the lot. It's big enough, but thanks for explaining everything.
Michael?
So the biggest issue with usually eliminating lot lines aren't that difficult. It's just getting everything in order. Didn't do it. That, and you're currently working on that, correct? I think that, I think it looks beautiful.
Thanks.
I think it's going to be a damn nice house.
It carries through enough with the look of the current house. My only question, are you going to have your pretty fence?
Of course.
Of course. Good.
The white picket fence?
Well, a fence, that
No, not the white.
A fence.
It just, it's home. And I like home. Yeah.
So nothing above it is, eh, not even the roof overhangs is adding to the current
And nothing is going beyond.
No, everything was deliberately brought in far enough that it would be within the setbacks, including the overall.
Two foot deck.
Nope. Nope. No, there's nothing, there's nothing on, on both side, side, you know, lot lines that no decks, no extensions, no nothing. Just windows.
Well, and it's fire wise, given those two trees, even though I do love them, but they're Well, and it's fire-wise, given those two trees, even though I do love them, but they're like right next to the house.
Yeah, the big tree in the front yard is kind of.
Yeah.
Backyard is more so.
Backyard is more so.
Yeah, the tree in the backyard was.
I'll have to walk back in and take a look.
I don't have any question, other questions, Jill, or?
Nobody else, is there anybody in the audience? We'll open to public comment.
I'll go first.
Please state your name and address.
Kristy Bloodworth, current address is 504 Water Street, but I also own 232 Main Street, which is directly to the south of this property. My house on Main Street, it sits crooked on the lot line. So it's a skinny little house, it's a 25-foot lot. It's closer to the lot line in the front, and it kind of angles out one or two feet. But that, that whole side of the house is in the setback. We had actually tried to add on a few years ago, in 2019, and thought we had everything approved. And Joe and Jen came to our last meeting and brought up the issue that they said they had never been happy about the fact that our houses were so close together. They created the, the setback issue. They built their first addition, which was in the early 2000s, all the way out to the setback line. Before that, the houses were really far apart. So, we weren't turned down at that point, we actually went back, and we were going to apply for a variance, and then 2020 happened. And so, we ended up just buying a bigger house in Radcliffe. But, you know, at some point, we might want to move back down here and, and do something with this property. And in the meantime, I have some really nice tenants in there right now. So, I noticed on a lot of the, the renderings of their, their new addition, that my home is not on those photos at all. There is absolutely no depiction of how close this house is to my house. And not only are they building up on what they had built before, but it looks to me like they're building out another portion in the front, all the way out to their setback line, and that the angle of the roof is going to be two stories high on the front part, which potentially could shed snow right down onto my house. My house has been there since 1892, it's not, you know, it's not moving. But again, I mean, I have a letter from December 11th, 2019, and I'll just quote one little line from their letter, and this was when we were coming for approval, "While we have never been thrilled with the closeness of our two homes, there was never anything we could do about it until the idea of their remodel came, became a reality." So, I just do want to put that on the record, that they created the setback issue. I'm not trying to, you know, tank their, their project right now, but there are some things that stood out. I did go through the Mintern Design Standards, and Section A1B, which is Orientation, says, "The orientation of improvements shall consider adjacent properties as well as snow storage, snow shedding, and solar orientation. Another important component of orientation is drainage impact to adjacent properties, waters, body, water bodies and streets." And it also says, "In no case shall snow shedding be permitted to occur onto an adjacent property." There's about a foot on my side of the house that is not fenced in. When we did the lot lines, it just, or when we redid the fence, it was a collaborative effort between both of our, our families to redo the fence. But there is a portion that is not fenced in, but it's on my side of the house, that is actually on my property. So, anything that comes off of that side, of the, the part of the roof that pitches towards my home, I think there's going to be an issue with snow shedding. There's one more in that section that says, "The structure shall be placed on the lot in a manner that will not cast substantial shadows over adjacent properties." I remember when they added on to their property in the early 2000s, I was actually on the Planning and zoning commission at that point, I had to recuse myself. But I did speak up at that point and say, you know, they were blocking my view of, of everything. I mean, my kitchen window went from, you know, staring out at the sun every day to staring at a wall. And I understand that you're not entitled necessarily to your view, but if there is an issue with shadows, I really think a two-story building that close is going to cause an issue with my roof. I think I'm going to have ice dams on that side of the building that I've never had before. I've always had a problem with ice dams on the other side of my house, which is where there's another two-story house that blocks. And the sun comes, if I'm staring at the front of my house, the sun comes up this way and goes over this way. So, I will no longer, with their home, I think, not have any afternoon sun on the roof. And I feel like when I, when we were proposing our addition, that we had to at least do some kind of study, and, and I looked back through our packet where we submitted our proposal, I thought we had to show shadows, because we were going to have a rather tall addition, but I didn't find anything, so. But.
Do you?
Okay. But I, I think it's going to be an issue. And like I've said before, the front part of that roof is angled right at my house. So, with it being two stories up, just the, the trajectory and physics, I think is going to shoot it out onto, I have a little flat shed roof in the front, and then there's a, more of a pitched roof towards the back. Section A1C, massing and scale. Buildings and improvements shall complement, rather than overpower, the adjacent natural and built environment. Building mass, form, length, and height shall be designed to provide variety and visual interest while maintaining a scale that is similar or compatible to adjacent structures. I know they have a double lot, I know I have a single lot. They already have a rather large house on that lot. And I remember Michelle Matier, I think when she was explaining to some of the members of the commission back in 2019 about our house, she said, she compared it to the Up, the house from the, the movie Up, that, you know, just gets surrounded by the big structures. And I'm, it's becoming more and more of a reality, but, you know, it is one of the older homes in town. I appreciate that after what happened to us, you know, Michelle actually asked us come, and to come to speak to counsel when a lot of the historic preservation part of the code was being written, because this is kind of what happens with some of the older homes. And we're just getting surrounded, which I don't want to interfere with anyone else's property rights, and I understand that they have, you know, a problem of growth, and that's why we wanted to add on to our house, is that our kids are the same age. So, I know that they need space. But, you know, and again, I, I think that, the, the fact that their rendered drawings, and I don't know if this is intentional or by chance, don't show any homes around their home. It, it's a beautiful home, I mean, what they, what they want to do is, it's a lovely looking home. But I think that it's kind of misleading and not representative of what it's really going to look like when you look at their, their drawing, and they have a very large lawn all around it. There's no other homes that are really boxing it in. And I think that the scale of it really needs to be considered. And again, I looked back at our packet, and we had houses on both sides of ours, to show what it was going to look like in the neighborhood that it's going to be in, not in a suburb, you know, suburban neighborhood with a lot bigger lot than what we have in Mintern. Section 2A also mentions roof pitch and form roof shall be designed with consideration to snow accumulation and shedding. I mean, honestly, I think that's my main concern, is the snow shed. And I know Nathan has some other issues that he wants to bring up, but I think that it's too big for the space. And if anything, the roof pitch, the, the roof just coming towards my house needs to be changed, because I think that it's going to create a problem.
Thank you, Kristy, we currently take all comments and then address them.
Sure.
After Nathan gets down the ledge.
Perfect.
I'm also at 504 Water, but previously 232 Main. Kristy really went through the majority of the concerns, but really, it comes down to the front gable that then would shed to the south, in the drawing in the front. And so, right there, the 232 house does extend past the front, the current front of 222. So the actual exterior wall of 232 could potentially, even though it's gabled and it would probably come at an angle, there is definitely concern of snow accumulation there. That's something that could potentially be rather easily mitigated, but it's just something we wanted to talk about. There's no snow fencing or clips or anything noted on the plans that I was able to see. So that's also concerning, I know it's asphalt shingle, which can potentially hold more snow, but there's always a concern there. And if you look at the front rendering, it does come right down into the corner. So, that's one concern. The other one's not necessarily a huge concern to us. I know that they're going to have to do some surgical demolition, I believe is the terminology used, and that the existing addition was done with helical piers and posts, just to carry the weight of the existing addition. So if that is going to need to be reinforced, we, I do know that there during runoff tends to be an underground river running through the lots next to us. And luckily, our 1892 foundation has never shown signs of any water or any of that. So, obviously, this is not something that would stop anything, but that is also a concern of mine, is if any changes to the potential underground and the foundations, I know they're excavating what looks some kind of a conditioned crawl space under the new section that is the corner of the house, that is at the front and on the side of the south. So, that's more of a, of a logistical concern. But we really have a concern, like if any water starts coming over the property underneath, that would be a concern. I don't know that that's the case, I haven't looked at any of the engineering or the soil sampling, but I know I used to do a lot of work for Ed Turnbull, who formerly owned 231, and I know that across the street, and I know that they had the water coming through as well. So it's kind of a known thing in the neighborhood. So, those are really my big concerns, it's like Kristy said, it's a big, beautiful house, and I wouldn't deny anyone something that they have a right to. But these are just the concerns that we have. That's really all I have to say.
Thanks, Nathan.
Thank you.
Jeff, would you like to respond to some of that?
Sure. Kristy and Nathan, I mean, we've known each other a long time. Watch your kids grow up. So to first address Kristy's stuff, definitely, I don't think Jen or Joe would have any issues with conditioning the approvals related to the snow shedding issues on the front gable. That is proposed to be an asphalt shingle roof there, which could either be snow clipped and/or snow fenced. You know, we certainly would not want to, and, and also likely, the eaves would likely also need to be, he taped, just to keep the eaves from collecting snow and causing any types of icicles that would be a, a health and safety concern. So, you know, obviously, the intention, Jen and Joe's intention is not to shed any water or any snow on the neighbor's property. As far as the, the concerns, so, so, you know, that, to Kristy's point, you know, that was her, and Nathan's, one of their main concerns with that snow shedding. And, and we want to make sure that, that it's conveyed to the board as well as to them, that, that that is certainly not something that Jen and Joe would want to have. They want, would certainly want to make sure that it's safe and that there would not, that, that they would mitigate any issues regarding the, the snow. As far as this, the sunlight and shading and view corridors, you know, we did look at it, we did talk about it. The, the path of the sun from, in the wintertime, you know, obviously, it's a little different than the summertime, but as the sun comes up to the south and moves across the valley, it's, I would almost say that the house on the other side of theirs would cause more shading in the morning and until mid to late afternoon. You know, the houses across the street, including the Ironwoods Building, almost, you know, if you stand on the front of, of the, of their houses and look to the sun, looking west, you know, that, those front porches bake all summer long and really all winter long. Like, it's, it's hot out there. So, I'm not so sure that there's going to be a lot of shade cast because of the actual orientation of the sun. I don't really feel like it, there needs to be a drastic study done. I think you guys, if you're concerned about it, could walk out there and look at the way the sun travels and decide amongst yourselves if that's an issue, but I, I really don't think that it is. I really think that the front of those houses probably take more sun than anything versus the sides of them. And I don't, I don't know that they're really causing much shading anymore than it's there now. View corridors, I don't, I don't know if that, if there's a, a condition of the code that, that provides for that, other than just practically what fits the neighborhood. And I think to Kristy's point, their house is unfortunately built on the property line, so there is no setback on their side, the, the side that they share with Jen and Joe, which unfortunately also exacerbated, you know, or, or kind of tied their hands with going vertically, because the code didn't allow them to go vertically on top of what was there. And so, to say that Jen and Joe caused the problem by building on their setback, I don't know that that's a fair statement. They built to what the code allowed them to do, which is up to the setback. And as you guys know, everybody in town pretty much builds to the setback, almost, if they can afford to these days. That's why the setbacks are there, to say this is the line that you can build to, period. And if that's what they did, then they were within their right to do it. It didn't necessarily tie the neighbor's hands, it just is a fact that they built to the setback. And they've also are incurring a ton of cost and expense by meeting the code on the other side of the house, to say that their house is encroaching on the other side. And so, to build into, to, to allow the next story to be built inside and to coat is going to cause a lot of problems financially, to, to structurally support that. But obviously, that's what has to be done to meet the code. So that's what the structural engineers have designed. As far as it being too big for the space or too big for the lot, again, you know, our code is there for, to say this is what you can do. And we've been approving plans all over town that meet the code. Even if it's, if the roof height says 28 feet, most of the plans come in at 27 foot 11 and 7/8 inches. And it meets the code on paper. And that's really all we can do. I've been sitting up on the, on the board for a while, and I was told a long time ago, if you don't like the code, then you should change the code. But the code is there to, to tell people what they can and can't do. So, as far as Nathan's concerns about structural mitigation or, or the soil. structural mitigation or the soils or whatever, like all of the, the structural engineers or the structural engineer that's designed the plans has considered all of that. And that will be reviewed, you know, if there's, when, when there's a building permit. They have not incurred any water issues. And they certainly would not be, are not proposing to be putting any water or snow or anything else, drainage problems onto any, any adjacent properties. So with that, I guess I would take more questions from you guys if you want, or. I also, I also do want to point out that, you know, unfortunately, like Christie said about Michelle saying that the house was like up, I mean, every single house to the south of that is two stories tall. So whether this fits the neighborhood or not, it's really going to be. You can go count, count the houses south of that. And this house is not bigger or more overpowering than any one of those. So I think if it's the neighborhood, it's not going to look any different than any house in the neighborhood really from the street.
Hold on, Jeff, while we have public comment open, I want to do Zoom in case there's something there. Nobody, nobody. So unless there's no other public comment, we'll close public comment and come to commission.
I have some follow-up questions, Jeff.
Yep.
So they said you're built up to this. Basically, I'm looking at your triangle. Obviously, the triangle is in between you and they're obviously on lot two, correct?
No, no, we're on the other side.
They're on lot four.
Yes.
Oh, that's, so this is Darren's.
Yes.
This is Darren's over here. And so their actual house, how far is their house?
They're on lot five, Jeff, or Michael.
They're on lot five. And, and So they're on the property line and your, your existing house as well as
So their, their house is five feet from the edge of that house.
So you haven't built anything in setback, even from the beginning for me?
They just, they don't have a setback.
They just don't have the setback.
Yeah, well, we have, it's like, what, six inches at one side and like a foot and a half.
So, and then as far as the sun goes.
We inherited that.
As far as the sun goes, I, I'm a firm believer, because I look at it every day as well. Didn't, especially in the wintertime, the sun's going from south to north. And when it gets about somewhere around here, it disappears over the hill in the winter. So there's, and I, you know, and anything they have in the front will still happen. As far as, as far as, obviously, you know, I was going to recommend some clips anyway, you know? Obviously, I had that written down before I came here, you know? Especially on, you know, the metal roof in the front and on, and on their side, it's completely maintainable. You don't want to put clips and heat tape up. You're going to end up having to put a gutter up there too. Because if you put heat tape up, it's just going to create big, long icicles that hang down. That being, that being said, you know, obviously, limiting all your lot lines really, really good thing to do, for sure. And, you know, I assume that you want that as well.
Yes.
Eric?
Just think like, I mean, if we did add a condition, something where we do some kind of when it comes to the snow coming off their, the front into the, I mean, I think there's got to be something that prevents that. If there's not a study or something that they could add to that roof to make sure that it's not going on right on into their shed or into their house itself.
I think, yeah, I'm, I think they would make a definite, well, I would make a condition. I would suggest a condition of cutters, the heat tape and the snow retention. I think it's completely controllable. I potentially have similar issues that I can completely control. And regardless, even if you have your five foot, nobody wants to go on their neighbor's house, you know, so.
Those are just packed right in there too, then.
Yeah.
Totally.
And then as far as staff, staff, what you pointed out before being that they're working on getting those lot lines eliminated. You don't feel it necessary for us to require that at this point.
I didn't in the staff report, but as I said, I understand if you do want to make it a condition of approval, just to formalize it.
Okay. Michael did not, oh, did you want to respond to one of them?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Hi. Jovian, Jovianki two, two, two Main Street. I was just seeing if we get a, one of the renderings up.
Sure, which one?
From the back.
From the back, okay, just give me a second.
I just wanted to point out the, the roof. Orientation.
It's the front.
It's the front.
Yeah, the front is what we're concerned with.
So you can see Christie's house is over here. And this gable is existing. And I've never had any snow shed off of that. So you can see on the, on the front, which, anything that's going to shed is going to go in front of our porch.
That's not the one we're talking about.
It looks like that right side, right side.
Yeah.
But it's very, it's a very small area. It's very, so I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, it's actually, it's even gabled, but.
Hey, Jeff, can you use the mic, please? Thanks.
It's almost like we should look at the, the architectural plans because this valley, where this roof meets this roof. You know, that little point right there is, you know, this is where obviously where the, the problems happen in the valleys and the icicles happen. This same condition is over there. This isn't just a big roof shedding over, a ton of snow onto their land. So if there's
It's page one fifty-nine Madison from our packet.
You can kind of see that right there? Well, you can see it right here.
That's where, yeah, there it is.
So all this is pitching towards the Bloodworth's house, but it's hitting this roof. It's not just
It comes into a valley.
Comes into a valley.
Yeah, like technically, as far as, you know, of course, I would recommend the front where the metal is, snow fence for where you come in and out. And as far as requirements go, if you don't want to put gutters on the back of the house, it's obviously your choice, that little.
I mean, we have gutters on our whole house right now.
That little, that little specific area.
I figure some clips and we're good.
Yeah.
That's really where I'm at.
Yeah, I mean, if this was all roof pitched to their house, this would be a ton of snow.
Or if you put in the twelve, the twelve-foot gutter that comes around the corner on their side or down the wall, maybe.
Any of the above.
Yes.
From the valley to the south.
Yeah.
Because you don't think anything is actually pitching that direction. It's just, it just looks that way.
It just looks that way from the front rendering because of the angle of the rendering, but anything even that would avalanche is going to hit this valley. And it's going to build up in the valley, but it's not going to just avalanche into their land.
Were you thinking originally about putting a gutter there or?
Yes. And while we are, you know, I think both valleys are going to need heat tape or they're going to leak.
We need to run heat tape up the valley.
Right.
And then you could get away with just adding any gutter.
Right.
And you wouldn't have to put ziggs on the roof.
Right.
You could just put some snow clips up there and it would retain it, it would drain down the valley and it would disperse however.
Yeah. And if it were metal or standing seam or something that would shed, that's one thing. But since it's going to be asphalt shingles, they're not going to move much.
If you put random clips in, it holds it, you know, it definitely holds it.
Right.
And if you're catching the water at the bottom, then it's, it's, yeah, I, it was looking at the picture originally and not seeing that. Um, I thought it was a, a little bit more intense, but I think that I think if you're planning on putting a gutter anyway, heat tape in the gutter in the valley, you add some clips. And that, that, uh, that will take care of any concerns they have about it jumping over the side, sort of.
Yeah, I think there's, there's probably eighteen inches right there of this roof that goes all the way. And that, yeah, that's about it. Everything else is going to hit the valley. The valley starts there.
You're going to put in a six-inch gutter because you're going to have a lot of water instead of a five?
Speaking from experience.
Disperse it where you like on your property.
That's all I was going for.
Yeah, we, again, you know, the intention is certainly to, to not cause any problems for the Bloodworth's property at all. That's certainly no.
Thank you for pointing that out.
I just wanted to say that when Michael redid my roof, unfortunately, the pitch of my roof doesn't really allow for slide. But we did put heat tape in the gutters and the gutters and run it through the gutter to the ground. And even when it melts, it doesn't create a lot of water to shake the bottom. Actually, it helps me because where it comes down with the heat tape at the base, it keeps that part kind of thawed all winter. So if I go in there and stomp on it, it melts and then I have no place to put snow.
You have more water under it with rain than slow snow now.
So I think that's a manageable situation if done.
Yeah, the gully washer that's coming.
But the groundwater issue, do you have any groundwater issues under your building now? Please.
I'm more curious. Yes, so underneath our garage in our basement, so that'd be, I guess, ten to twelve feet lower than anything we're digging for this new addition. But digging for our garage slab, we did encounter some groundwater.
That's like down here.
So we do have crawl space under where those three windows are currently and never had any water in that crawl space.
Is there anything you can do to mitigate possibility?
I think you're too high. The river is way down here. So, you know, every Eagle Street would be underwater.
Because the river's low, so the water follows up.
Yeah, before they would ever see water in that crawl space, you'd be, Eagle Street would be underwater.
The only reason I say this, I know exactly what they're talking about because up on pine, the people to the south of me have had water, the people two doors over to the left of me have had water. Put mine in the house in between them. Then you go across the street, Chris's had water, but then it switches again. You don't know where that's going to happen, but I put a little thought just to make sure it's not going to cause an issue for their eighteen ninety-two home, please. Parking, I assume the four spots are in the back, across the back, and the two in the garage and two on the and then I think eliminating the lot lines at this point is a great thing to do and just get it over with.
That's in process.
Other than that, I don't have anything. Amanda?
No, I don't have any questions of Jeff on the drawing. I do want to say I, I live in a single-story house with a big house next door, so I, I get it. But at the same point, like we're here on the, like the commission to read our code and apply it. So I think it's a great drawing and doing a really nice job with everything.
I do think if somewhere along the line, well, I don't know that it's necessary because every other house is two stories, you said.
Pretty much, you can go all the way down to Amanda's street, I think, from Christie's house. And I saw about every house that is two stories tall.
You don't count Woody's place.
Woody's place might be five stories tall.
No, I was going to say all of his tall trailers.
Oh, yeah, Woody's trailers. I, we'll see how many more years those trailers stay there.
That is a good point.
I bet when they're there, they're going to build to the max.
Going to sell out to some developer.
So with that, we've gone through commission. Anybody else have any thoughts through discussion?
Public discussion.
No, just right now, talking to Jeff, have you come up with anything else?
I'm, I'm good.
So the only thing is if Daryl was here, um, just, I can't, what material are you?
Firewise.
Yeah, just to make sure firewise. It looks like you guys are taking care of that five-foot space quite nicely in between. But we all know that we're in that area and our commissioner, who's not here, Daryl, would ask you.
Well, yeah, and I think to, to Daryl's point.
Five feet?
All, this is, this is the side of the house that faces the Bloodworth's. All of this is cementitious siding, doesn't burn. All of the fascia is cementitious, doesn't burn. The soffit doesn't burn. And this is stone, doesn't burn. So this is all non-combustible materials. The existing house is non-combustible. And then what is proposed to match is non-combustible. This is all non-combustible. So they're really, the only, this timber is wood on the front. Similar to, you know, we're going to try to reclaim and reuse some of the timbers that are on the front of the house now and incorporate them in some areas, possibly, you know, into this, like headers and stuff for, for this. But for the all intent purposes, all of the, the siding and the materials that are close, you know, five feet away from the Bloodworth's house are going to all be non-combustible materials.
That was it for me.
I have one extra question.
Jem Bianchi, two, two, two Main Street. In general, for twenty years of being next to these guys and our kids are, they're growing up, we loved their rendition of their remodel. When we came to council, all we were asking was the same thing that we're doing on Darren's side, on lot two, was to come in to the five-foot setback because fire was a concern, even though I do have a lot of non-combustible materials on the side of the house. Building straight up, right on the property line was our concern. We were just looking for that second story that they wanted to add to come in to the setback, which is exactly why we pushed real hard and Jeff pushed real hard to make sure that we did that on the right side, on the other side, opposite of them. So I, I feel like we've, we've worked pretty hard to try to make it what the code says and what we're supposed to do. And that's all we were asking for them. And I miss them. And I, I, I really wish that we could have brought theirs in five feet so that they could have stayed next to us, but they chose to leave. So I, I feel like we've done what we've, we've tried to accomplish to make sure that we've done everything that we can do. So.
Thank you, Jeff.
I love to repeat myself. So, in your process of eliminating your lot lines, you at least started trying to get your maps in order, correct?
Well, it's not that there's anything wrong. It's just taking the two lots that, that they bought and the quit, and the quitclaim deed and just quiet titling it, eliminating a lot line.
Just eliminating.
But to your point, all we're doing is quiet titling the parcel that was a quitclaim deed and then creating a new plat. And then I believe the process is a minor subdivision, correct? We have not applied for a minor subdivision.
Should be like a lot line elimination.
Abandonment. So it's basically like a plat amendment.
But that can be put in as a condition, can it not?
Yeah, I've done it several times.
Right.
Yep.
So it can be a condition of the motion. Along with the other thing that I picked up on that we were mentioning was Along with the other thing that I picked up on that we were mentioning was, um, we can the clips, fences, and heat tape of gutters somehow, if you feel that you wanted to put that in to make sure that's a condition. Other than that, I think everything is covered.
Alright, so we can talk amongst ourselves. Okay, right now. So are we ready to make a motion?
I would just ask if, if you guys are gonna condition the clips and the heat tape and things that it's very specific. And also when it comes to the, um, the abandonment of the lot lines that it, that the condition, I would ask that the condition doesn't hold up the building or the demolition or some process that could happen while that's in process.
Top condition prior to final.
That's fine, CO or whatever.
But the only thing that I'm concerned with, and maybe I'm gonna ask Scott and Madison, is we don't have a place in our code that's called out clips, that type of thing, so I'm concerned we're setting precedent before saying we're gonna condition something that's actually not in our code. Most of the times we condition something, it's because it's required in our code and it's gonna be coming down the pipe.
I think I've done it.
So come on.
I have.
That would be my only question to staff, is like, is that something we?
Have we actually done conditions or has it been a recommendation?
We've done, but I
It's a recommendation or we actually conditioned it?
And I would say if, if you're worried about precedent, thank you. Our training is paying off.
True, yeah.
I am married to her, aren't you?
Yes, you are. But, uh, and, and quite frankly, I think Christie, uh, pointed this out, uh, in our design standards, there is language that talks about snow storage and impacts to neighboring properties. I think that falls in line with, you can tie that condition to that section of our design standards.
Okay.
Right? It's not a hard and fast section of our code that says you shall have snow clips anytime you, like, there is, that doesn't exist, you're correct. But I think that statement or statements within the design standards is something that, um, is completely fair game. So if you feel that snow clips are something that need to be conditioned in order for this project to better comply with the design standards and guidelines, by all means.
I have a motion.
You go for it.
If anyone can detail the snow clips on the roof, I know it's Michael.
Where's my damn pitch? Almost motion. Alright. I make a motion to approve the final plans for two twenty-two Main Street with the following, with the recommendation and conditions. My recommendation is this, that snow retention be put wherever you choose that you need it, but with, but with the condition being that in the
South.
southwest corner in that small area, definitely put snow clips and a small section of gutter.
Southeast, no?
Northwest.
Southwest.
Southwest.
Southwest?
The small area where the valley is.
Correct.
You put, so I believe that's southwest.
East is the backside of the house.
And, and then I'd also like to condition that the lot line be eliminated prior to final CO.
Anybody else have anything?
No, I don't have anything. I'm just saying like, that's like, that could be a two-year process.
That's fine, it gives them two years to do it.
Two, no, no, two years to get that lot line, like to get that quiet, quick type, like, have it all like recorded in the courts, everything like that. Like, it's a recording of a court, that quick.
It's not gonna take that.
Go ahead, Scott. Um, just, just to be clear, I probably won't be there. Actually, let's, so you, there's a motion on the table. I would, I would recommend that someone second it and then there can be further discussion.
I second the motion with the revision that if the quiet title becomes untimely, due to unforeseen, then, then they can move forward with CO. I just
Can I, can I jump in before you revise the, so can someone second it and then we'll talk?
Can I second it?
Okay, great. Um, so my understanding is that the quiet title portion of an amended final plat or a lot line elimination is somewhat separate. I think the issue at hand is we have Lot Three and Four that have a common lot line running right through the middle of the house, that ideally that should be eliminated. So if, if as part of that lot line elimination plat, the quiet title piece becomes part of that, great. The issue for us right now is the elimination of the common lot.
Yes.
I don't care about the other.
So your point is well taken.
No, we care, but.
Scott, I'm sorry, please clarify again. Issues with what?
The issue, I believe, is really with regard to the common lot line between Lots Three and Four, not the quiet title area. So if the quiet title process catches up to that amended final plat, great. If it doesn't, then that's something they could clean up again later with a second plat. The, the issue I think that Michael is trying to address is this common lot line that exists between Lots Three and Four, which runs through the house.
That is what, that is what I'm talking about.
Yes, that's, and I agree with all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Do you agree with that, Jeff and Jen and Joe?
Are we okay with the motion that is before us?
I already seconded it.
Right, but are we still, everybody? Okay, is there anything in the discussion amongst us?
Clarify that.
Do we have to re-motion, do we have to re-motion it with the?
He would like clarification.
Okay. The verbatim mo- the mo- the snow retention part stays the same. The, the second condition is the lot line be eliminated between Lot Three and Four. And if the quiet title gets held up in the mix, that does not
Stop.
stop a final CO from being given.
Well stated.
Clear, really good, Michael.
And, and that being said, I think it's a beautiful house.
So we have a motion by Michael with conditions. We have a clarification on conditions and second by Amanda. May I have a vocal vote, please?
Amanda, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Eric, aye.
Michael, aye.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Good night. Well, not you, Jen.
I knew it was an easy fix. For the record, if it takes two years for me to do this, I'm gonna kick it out of the family.
She already said that, you're done.
Okay, next on tonight's agenda, staff reports, managers report, Brumman, Jay is not. Anybody read it? Has everybody read it? Anybody have any questions that might be answered by somebody here? Nothing. Managers report by Katie. Katie, do you have anything?
They'll be, yeah.
Okay, we read hers. Anybody have any questions? No? Planning Commission comments, anybody? Scott, Lynn, are we starting to get chapter sixteen back?
Well, um, I think we've been focused on getting ready for open houses and introducing the zoning changes. So I don't know that we'll be back with any specific sections of Article Sixteen or Chapter Sixteen until probably July.
Okay, chapter, um, the first open house is June ninth?
Correct.
And the second is the fourteenth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
And the twenty-fourth.
And the twenty-fourth. So, and it's from four to seven in the evening. If anybody, it would be nice if all at least showed up for one at some point to see what's going, because it'll all be the same presentation, correct? Not by areas, okay. So they'll all be the same presentation, so if you can all get to one of them at least, that would be wonderful.
Are we gonna, are, once we get through those, are we gonna have specific open houses for specific zones? No, after that. So this will be everybody putting in their two cents now for the whole town. Yeah, the open houses will be kind of the kickoff to that. I think we're gonna have an online comment form, we're gonna have all the information packets, twenty-seven of them, for each of our existing zone districts, what they are now, what they're gonna change to, what the differences are. Um, and we're gonna leave that comment period open probably for another month after the, um, open houses. And if people wanna meet with us, come in and talk with us, ask questions, that's what we're gonna do in July and August. And then when we get into this, fall, then we get into each zone and then we'll have a public comment for each one of those notes when we address a certain, so. Well, after we get done with that, we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission, right? And you can start digging into the nitty-gritty of the proposed zone districts, the proposed uses, any dimensional limitation changes. That's probably the next section that we'll bring back unless we've got, we haven't worked on anything else right now, because we've been focused on this zone district, which, and the open houses, which have been a pretty heavy lift, so. Does that answer your question? I don't, I mean, we could break it down however you. We'll do the open houses. As usual, we might get fifty percent of the population to come say something if we're lucky. And then when it gets into the real nitty-gritty of bringing something back, and you go, oh my God, this is what's happening in my neighborhood, and then we go and talk about it in a meeting. Then will there be more additional opportunities for the public to comment on what we're proposing or not? Your, your meetings are open to the public and, and we'll notice the meetings and, um. I just don't know if, if those, I'm trying to think if those.
Was the flyer about those meetings in the packet that went on the doorbell?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and then we are also sending out letters to every property owner, because we understand that not every property owner lives in town. There are a lot of renters here. So in order to cover all of our bases, we are also sending out letters, uh, about the general process, what to expect over the next couple of months and those open house deals.
Alright, and then packing up on Jeff, what Jeff was talking about, I think it was a great question because I think two parts to that. I think that, of course, the open house comes up, people start talking, and then, and then they wanna be, they wanna be heard, even if they forgot the open house, if something is changing in their specific neighborhood. That's where it gets a little chaotic.
And there's gonna be reactions between people.
And then the, the other part, since Scott brought it up, which is a good thing, sort of a good thing. As far as the comments online, I know sometimes we have comments online that can come from anywhere. Are we gonna have any comments online to where people actually say whether they're a homeowner or whether they're, it's just their thoughts?
Just the residents?
Homeowners, you can't really, how do you, somebody be a resident or a homeowner?
They don't have to make them do that, but maybe it could be identified as yeah, just because, just because sometimes, sometimes we get a lot of response, like, it'd be nice if people could only respond once, you know, but sometimes it's nice to know that we're changing. So, like, certain stuff in town that seventy percent of these comments were from residents or homeowners and thirty percent were, and everybody weighing in is not a bad thing at all, it's good, because those architects, those people that have good ideas, people, like, the one thing I learned from being on P and Z. Even, it's the only thing I learned. My wife tell you the same thing, but even, even if, uh, you think you have thought it all through, your, your team members, which includes you and everybody, brings up good points, you, not one person can think of everything, but I do think that it would be I understand what, what, what's being said, that you can't just do it just for homeowners, but maybe that could be a lot.
We could ask a question.
Ask.
Do you know we do that with the Highlands?
Yes.
So we knew who was from, well, we knew a percentage was matured, what percentage was not.
I mean, computer champions can log in a hundred times, but in general, could we sort of?
We can try to sort or ask a question.
Ask a question.
Own property, do you rent whatever?
Limit five hundred responses from one person?
I can limit one response per device.
That's a great idea, Madison. I can't even type. And then, and then second, we're talking about it because we're not gonna see Katie, thank you for filling in, and we know Minter's not easy, and, and I think you did a good job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I agree also, thank you.
Look at that. Who wants to take the honor tonight?
Before that, I do wanna say that the contract series is gonna start again soon and, uh, Thursday nights again.
And I probably should mention the two future meetings, June eleventh, anybody have any issues?
No.
June twenty-fifth, anybody have any issues?
The twenty-fifth?
No, Eric, on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, the twenty-fifth. I, I believe I'm gonna be here the twenty-fifth.
I'll just get nowhere, Eric, at this point.
If I can get, yeah, if I can get an eye surgery, I'm gonna take it, but.
My only other shout-out is GoPro Games is in like two weeks, Thursday's Down, Down River Race in the back of Minter, it'd be awesome, have some residents back there. Show them support. It runs behind, like it puts in, um, before the S-curves, then comes through town, all the kayaks and goes underneath, it's, depending on the water, water levels and stuff. But we always have a watch party in our, but it'd be, yeah, cowbells, everything.
And the bike race too, right?
Yeah, the ba- but those are on Saturday, all those bike races are on Saturday, with all the slalom races are Saturday and Sunday.
I'm not gonna like to hear that idea.
Yeah, and then the river races are Thursday. It's just growing more and more into Minter, and, um, I feel like we just don't ever really capture.
No.
We don't really.
They can just go for you now.
I don't know, are they even on the way?
I think so, yeah, it's always, yeah.
And sometimes fishing too.
Yeah, I just said Thursday races look like they're gonna be on. Last year they were canceled because of the water level.
It should be pretty good.
It's, but it looks like it's gonna be spot on.
I've seen people floating already.
Yeah.
Amanda, did you get somebody to paint the storage unit out at the bike park?
No, I need to give you, I'm, I didn't know how to like, because I only have her by phone.
No worries. Um, you can, if, if you can email it to me, great, if not, just drop it off, um,
Okay.
at Town Hall. Um, I did wanna give you an update on that. I talked to Cindy, that's not, uh, she said that's a great idea, they'd love to do it. It's not currently built into the budget this year, um, but they do believe that they can build it into the budget for next year.
He may just volunteer to do it, that's what he means. That's even better. Yes, let me get to Cindy.
Is there anything else on the power line? Because there was still talk about if that comes through town and they are burying it, that it goes right through the bike park. That's a destroyed bike park.
Oh. Back to the beginning, who wants to be in honors tonight?
Make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting after May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
We have a second motion by Amanda, second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.